I'm just kidding. Okay, good evening and thank you for attending and viewing the September 20th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. Our first item this evening is a land acknowledgement and it will be read by Councilmember White.
The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located are on the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods or among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism.
Thank you. And now if you would like, please join us for the flag slit. All right. And before the city clerk calls the roll this evening, I just want to take a moment and recognize Councilmember Atkins Salazar is not here because she is at the California League of Cities Conference and has just been sworn in as their second vice president for our region up here. So that's very exciting and we congratulate her on that and miss her this evening. So will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Stillman? And Councilmember Atkins Salazar is absent and we have a quorum.
Thank you. If you wish to make a comment this evening, either during the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you're here in person, please line up at the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you're logged on to Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it's time for the public comment on the item you wish to speak. And if you are on the phone, press *9 to raise your hand. And when it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6. For each item, we will take in-person public comment first and then move to online comments and we will not be going back and forth. So if you want to comment, please line up at the podium or raise your electronic hand as soon as comment is being requested for that item. Our next item tonight is our ceremonial matters and we have one this evening, which is a proclamation in honor of the North Coast Stand Down, October 5th through 7th, 2023. And this will be read by Councilmember Stillman.
Thank you. The proclamation in honor of North Coast Stand Down, October 5th through the 7th, 2023, whereas during wartime exhausted combat soldiers can be ordered to stand down and go from the battlefield to a secure place for rest and recovery. And whereas today a stand-down is a grassroots event designed to help veterans and their families get medical, employment, social services, legal, and other types of information and assistance. And whereas the most effective veterans programs are community-based, nonprofit, veterans helping veterans, programs like North Coast Stand Down, the program's goal is to provide needed services to veterans and their families. And whereas many of the America's homeless adults have served their country in the armed forces and the North Coast Stand Down is committed to giving these homeless veterans access to additional short and long-term resources like shelter, drug and alcohol recovery opportunities. And whereas the previous North Coast Stand Down events have helped hundreds of veterans get the services to which they were entitled. In 2023, North Coast Stand Down will continue to make a positive difference for local veterans and their families and will raise community awareness of the needs of the returning active-duty soldiers. Now therefore be proclaimed that the City Council of the city of Arcata hereby honors North Coast Stand Down organization and the volunteers for addressing the needs of the North Coast veterans. The council encourages all veterans and their families in need of services to attend the 2023 North Coast Stand Down on Thursday, October 5th through Saturday, October 7th at the Humboldt County Fairgrounds in Ferndale. It's dated September 20th, 2023 and it's signed by Mayor Schaefer. And I believe Ann Poole is here to accept it.
Madam Mayor and City Council, thank you for honoring us again for this. And I'll give you just a little background on the stand-down. This is our 18th year. Originally, it was started to honor the Vietnam veterans coming back. Our government back in those days didn't give our veterans very much to work, what am I saying? I wanted to say to give themselves some support. And so the stand-down was started so that they would have a place to go, things for outreach, and a place to relax and be amongst their own. I've been doing this now, I believe this is my 11th year. And once you just get hooked into it, it's so heartwarming to see these fellows, particularly the homeless, that come in through those gates, kind of beat up and tired, and they get in there, they get a shower, they get haircuts, all kinds of outreach services. They have a place to stay and sleep. If they have animals, we have veterinarians that come and take care of them. We have a whole, the flower house actually, at the fairgrounds is set up as clothing. It's like a little shop. They can come in, get new clothes, and many of them will just throw away what they had and start all new. And those that register themselves as actually being homeless can get a voucher and we bus them down to Big Five and they get a $75 gift certificate to buy brand-new boots for the winter. So it's been a long haul, but now it's just blossomed. They even have a sweat lodge now so they can come on Thursday night or Friday night and do a sweat with a couple of Native Americans. And it's been heartwarming. If you'd like to come and volunteer, you don't have to register in advance. You can just come, register at the front desk and they will find a spot. We give them three real full meals a day. We have different organizations that cook a breakfast, a lunch, or a dinner. There's housing for overnight, there's showers. And in three days, it's a miracle. So I think I thank you again. I think I've gotten like eight of these now. And I love it. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you so much and thank you for being, you know, part of and helping such a wonderful event. So we're glad we can recognize you guys. All right, our next item will take us, we have no reports by commission or committee tonight, and that will take us to early oral communications. So the City Council values your comments and this is a 15-minute time period to allow people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. And at the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Support requests that require council action will be set for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers will be limited to two minutes. So if you are here in person, please come line up at the podium. And if you are on Zoom, press *9. Or wait, raise your hand on Zoom or press *9 if you're on the phone. All right, folks, you'll have two minutes, so come on up.
Good evening. I'm Red Wise. I want to address my comments to all four or five of the City Council. Even though two members are recused from participating in the discussion on the Gateway Plan, we have the general plan to consider also. August 22nd was the initial joint study session of the Gateway Area Plan. The next is set for next week, September 26th. The first meeting went well in some ways, not so well in other ways perhaps. The idea that the council can meet with the planning commission to discuss the aspects of the Gateway Plan in just two study sessions seems, I'll say, absolutely ridiculous to me. Why not meet for four or five sessions? There's just too much to do that you can do in two or three hours in discussions with the planning commission, in my view. My first questions are, is this next study session going to be a hybrid meeting? Will it be recorded on video? Will there be a recording available to the public? If not, please tell me. I will make other plans and take care of this. I wrote to you yesterday, a new article on ArcataOne.com about the state density bonus law situation. In July, the Community Development Director concluded his video with a bombshell that our Gateway Code and our Community Benefits Program are quote, "unlikely to be implemented." I consider this of utmost importance to be taken care of immediately. I'd like to know when the draft environmental impact report, when we might be seeing that. It's been delayed multiple times. It's now scheduled for the fall and it is October. There's a new article on ArcataOne.com about the mayor of Bratislava, Slovakia. He is an architect, as well as the mayor. And he said, "If you design better public spaces, you change the relationship the residents have with the city and also the relationship they have with each other." It's all there on ArcataOne.com. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I have to be careful with this new mic because anything that hits the podium affects the sound there. My name's Joanne McGary and I just wanted to share my bright and green magic trick with you. At the North Country Fair, I told people the magic was, you take a cup and you put it in this bag, and you take a plate and you put it in this bag, and you take the bag and you give me $10 and you go and eat off the plate and drink out of the cup, and you bring the plate back to me and the cup back to me in the bag and you get $10 back. And I asked the young people what the magic was, and some of them realized it was that no trash was generated. So 45 magic tricks happened at the North Country Fair this weekend. I'm hoping that more will do so in future events. And this brings me to the issue that we really need to focus on waste management in a much more intensive manner for festivals and just even daily use of our facilities and the trash cans that are spread out throughout town. And I just would love to actually have a day without a trash can, but have programs in place to provide people with alternative ideas of how to not fill up a trash can. So I was very pleased that the North Country Fair allowed me to try this at the fair. And I think we really can do something to make trash, keep the trash cans emptier in our community on an ongoing basis. And I'd love to work with anybody who'd like to work with me on seeing that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. Gregory Daggett. I wanted to address the study session that the planning commission and City Council got together for. The key word is "study session." It seemed to me and others that it was more of a tax session towards Kimberly. And the framework seemed to be, we want to understand your position. Well, I think the public wants to understand the rest of yours' position from the standpoint of sea level rise and the standpoint of the fire. I think for a year and a half, I've written and also spoke of this quite a few times. And I don't recall ever having a discussion from anyone that has that perspective of, let's develop in the coastal zone where, you know, we have the federal government saying, Noah, saying this isn't a very wise decision. But we seem to never have that discussion. The only time we had a discussion was when the public did quite a bit of pursuing of having the sea level rise experts come into this chamber and that was your opportunity to ask questions. But we haven't had any discussion. And from the standpoint of the fire district, I mean, I thought they were pretty clear in January when they came in here and they clearly said, anything over three stories was not okay with them from the standpoint that it's just, it's too risky. From where they had sorrel place, they had two fires there. And it isn't, I wanted to do some correction here. It isn't the fire that's the, it's the harm, it's the smoke that kills people. So if you think it's all about the fire, you're just wrong. So if you don't agree with that, just bring the fire department back here. I don't think they ever reported in front of this council. I think it was just the planning commission. So maybe, maybe not all of you are in tune with what they said, but I think it's, it's, it's time for you to like readdress all of that. And also our developers, why haven't we ever called our developers in to see why, you know, what they think about all this? Thanks.
Okay. Do we have any online comments this evening?
We do. The first one is Jane. Go ahead, Jane.
Hi there. I first of all want to thank Joanne McGary for doing this experiment. And it's something that I think we should consider promoting. She has worked very hard over the years to promote avoidance, to promote zero waste. And she has a viable alternative. And we ought to find a way to implement that across the board. Anyway, I just want to thank her for that. I also want to comment that I was very sorry to see Chief Ahern going to leave us in the paper. And he's been great. And he has been very available, very accessible, and very friendly. And, and we are losing someone who is very oriented toward community policing. And I hope whoever replaces him is comparable and carries on those values. He's, he's been a gem. And aside from that, in terms of next week's session, I do hope we conduct it as a discussion and include members of the public with the ability to ask questions. If we do create that circular pattern where people of, you know, you, the planning commission, and the public can all sit in that circle, we've done this before in a wide circle, and it allows everyone to participate and just talk about these issues, such as sea level rise, such as the coastal zone, such as the fire issues, such as, you know, building height and other issues that might be controversial. Thank you very much. We look forward to session next week. And thank you, by the way, for backing the L Street, well, the L Street pathway, the park, not having it as a street. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Jane. Do we have any more speakers online?
No additional online oral communications.
All right. Well, that will be the end of early oral communications and that will take us now to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion of these items. And if discussion is required, that item can be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. The end of, the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for discussion. Item A, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of September 6th, 2023. B, bi-weekly report on disbursements. C, reappoint Monique Molina and Walt Geist to the Economic Development Committee for a three-year term ending in September 30th, 2026. Item D, reappoint Andrea Allstone to the Energy Committee for a three-year term ending September 30th, 2026. Item E, reappoint Bill Rich to the Historic Landmarks Committee for a three-year term ending September 30th, 2026. Item F, award a contract in the amount of $210,000 to GHD Incorporated for construction management and inspection services for the old Arcata Road Improvement Project. Authorize the city engineer to approve change orders and increase the contract amount by up to $42,000, 20% of the total proposal, for a total not to exceed $252,000 to allow for any unforeseen contingencies and additional work as necessary. And authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Item G, adopt Resolution Number 234-09, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Arcata, delegating withdrawal authority for the city's California Employers' Pension Pre-Funding Trust, CEPT, to the city manager, finance director, and/or human services, Human Resources Administrative Services Director. Item H, adopt Resolution Number 234-08, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Arcata, amending the class and pay resolution, compensation and benefits for hourly-rated, part-time, temporary, and seasonal personnel to reflect various benefit changes/updates. And item I, approve an amendment to extend the city's lease agreement with the Arcata House Partnership for 501 Ninth Street in the amount of $600 a month for a new five-year term for the period September 21st, 2023, to June 30th, 2028, and authorize the city manager to execute the lease agreement and amendment. Do we have any council members that would like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Yeah, I'd like to pull C, please. Thank you.
We will pull C. Any items that staff would like to pull or members of the public? So if you have, if you want to pull it, come on up to the podium and hang out nearby because we're going to be hearing from you in a second. We'll need you at the microphone.
Cash disbursements item and the Arcata House lease on the annex item.
Okay, so that is item B and item I. Thank you. And so just hang nearby when we call comment on that. Come up. Do you have one as well? Come on up. Share the podium here.
Item G, I just wanted to know whether it's legal to take, I think it's $2.5 million from the waste and $2.5 million from the water.
Okay, so we're going to pull MG and you'll have your chance to comment on that. Okay, so do we have then a motion for items A, D, E, F, and H?
So move. Stillman.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries unanimously and that'll take us to item B.
So I appreciate pulling this item because I, sometimes at the last minute, am running my eyes through the cash disbursement list on the agenda packet. And I just have a question in regards to, a couple of times I see the same amount to the same organization right next to each other. And the only distinction maybe is some sort of a number. And so the two that I'm going to pull out just as an example, it's not because I'm pulling them out because I'm concerned about it, but there were two to Playhouse Arts for the same amount on September 1st. And then there was two to Bug Press for the same amount on the same date. And I'm just sort of curious how that operates.
So I don't have the detail with me, but I can actually go back and look up both of those. Typically, it's going to be that they're going to be regular, ongoing charges or it's something that we get charged the same amount for either on a monthly basis or a transactional basis. And although it doesn't show on the listing that we provide in the packet, they are tied to individual invoices. And we do go through the process of making sure that the invoices have separate accounts, separate invoices to make sure we're not duplicate paying anything. And to make sure that, we have all of the departments sign off on those to make sure that they're confirming that the service or the goods that were purchased were in fact unique and not a duplication. So we do have multiple levels of looking at that. And if I can get with you and pull those exact ones, and if you give me a day, I can even send you a copy of the invoice.
Yeah, that's, that's totally fine. And those were two that just sort of jumped out at me.
And you'll, you'll see that.
And I wanted to make sure they weren't duplicates. And, you know, just checking your, your math there or whatever. But thank you for the explanation. I look forward to further information.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so do we have any other public comment on item B, specifically
item B? You don't want to talk about item B? Okay, so we're, yeah, we're not there yet. Okay, cool. Then do we have a motion and a second for item B?
So move for adoption of item B. Stillman.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on item B. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries unanimously. That's going to take us to item C. Meredith, if you want to explain why we're pulling that.
Yeah, sadly, I need to amend this. Walt Geist no longer wishes to be reappointed to the EDC. Thank you for your service for as long as you have. I know you were a great addition. And we appreciate all you've brought to the EDC and totally understand that you've got other things to do. So that being said, I'd like to move to reappoint Monique Molina to the Economic Development Committee for a new three-year term ending September 30th, 2026.
So you're removing Walt?
Aye.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
And yes, thank you Walt for your service. Disappointing. So if you want to be on one of our committees, we have some vacancies. Check it out online. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And now that will take us to item G. Go ahead, please.
Item G, I think this is the issue that we've talked about in the past where you're pulling 2.5 million, 2.5 million from waste and water. The first thing is that I think when you raise the rates was, this one of the reasons that you raised the rates, you seemed to want to be transparent to the public on what these costs were for. And I don't believe it had anything to do with pension supplements. So there's that issue. And, but the next issue is, is it legal to do this? I mean, I'm not a lawyer. I don't know the answer. So I'm just asking you before you go ahead and do this, is this legal to take funds that were allocated for wastewater, which was improvements there and use it for the pension? Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other discussion or questions about item G? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Or move for adoption. Stillman of G.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second of item G. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask a quick question? Is there a way to address that or how does that work?
I mean, this is just for like authority for them to be able to take money out of the account. We already made the account. So that's, that's kind of by and by. And I trust our finance director's direction on that.
We already voted on it.
And yeah, it's the vote. So we have a motion on the table.
Yeah.
I asked for questions and you.
I just was concerned that there was still a community member that had questions, so.
We had this discussion like a couple meetings ago when we talked about.
Yeah, because that's not really this item. This is just now given, we already approved that part. So that's not what this, okay. So again, so I'm clear on the vote. Do we have ayes? Aye here?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. And then item I, take it away.
So thank you. When I saw the agenda posted on Friday and that the item I on the consent calendar was renewing a five-year lease for the annex building near the transit center for five years to Arcata House, I hadn't realized that the lease was up. And in reading some of the fine print, but not all of it, because my eyes and brain can't function well with a lot of that legal language. But I noticed that the lease apparently ran out on June 30th of this year. And I'm just wondering how, is there a holding over, there was a clause about holding over and how that's working. And I would also like to suggest, before we involve ourselves in a long-term lease commitment to one organization, we actually maybe start considering a use of our resources and buildings that might serve our community in a broader sense and provide more services and help in the needs of our community, more than perhaps Arcata House at this point in time is able to operate that building on a full-time basis. Currently, it's only open Monday through Friday, 1 to 4 is my understanding. And it's been really hard for me to actually get access to that building or talk to anybody there when I go by there because oftentimes people aren't there. And I just really think with a resource like that in a location where it is, and for the need that we really have in our community, especially as winter comes, I would really like us to step back a moment before we approve a long-term lease with one organization and maybe reconsider, as I shared with you in an email, a different model of looking at that space and how it could better serve our community perhaps. And so it's more about just relying on one organization and giving them a long-term lease on something when we might find we can create something more vibrant and better for our community. So I would like us to hold off on a five-year lease at this time and maybe extend the lease for another couple of months while perhaps some of us with the task force like I was talking about can work on some ideas on what we can do better for our community. So that's what I wanted to ask.
All right. I don't know what the specific question was, but is there any other questions or discussion from the council on this item?
I guess I'm just wondering, is that something that we can entertain?
Certainly if the council wants to look at additional service providers in the area, that is, I would say a separate discussion. I mean, I guess I would offer, we've had a long-term lease arrangement and a tremendous amount of services and grant monies that are dedicated to services through Arcata House Partnership in that site right now. While I understand five years does feel like a long time, sometimes, quite frankly, five years seems like a very short lease to me in terms of really ramping up to figure out what other services would be provided. Over, I'd say the many years that Arcata House has partnered on that site, I have seen them be very open to sharing space for, with other agencies and services in that, you know, within that space if they don't have overlapping conflicts. So they have made that space available for a lot of other county services to work out of, open-door clinic to work out of, the mobile showers to work out of. So I mean, I think that we can find ways to still utilize that facility if there are other service providers that have services that the city wants to support out of there.
Thank you for that clarification. I think. Thank you for that clarification. I think I misunderstood what Joanne was saying. I thought that she was saying to look into opportunities of sharing, but you're saying that that is something that can be entertained and has been in the past. They're open to that.
Yeah, I know that they used to operate the shower wagon there and other different resources like that. So, all right. Do we have a motion and a second?
So, we do?
Or do, do we?
Oh, I so move for approval of I, item on the consent calendar.
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on I. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. And that will take us into new business. And so item A under new business this evening is to award a contract of the amount of $154,890 to GHD for Arcata sea level rise vulnerability and adaptation planning services and to authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. So do we have a staff report from Environmental Services Director Emily Sinkhorn?
Yes. Good evening, council members. Just going to do a little shuffle here real quick. Great. So again, good evening. The city has really right now several sea level rise planning efforts moving forward concurrently. And this item before you today is around a contract award for a grant that your council accepted back in May from the California Coastal Commission. And that grant program that is funding this is intended to provide assistance to local governments that are undergoing or managing local coastal programs. And so the work that is really proposed for this study will inform not only our capital improvement planning in the city, but will also really inform our LCP updates that is currently happening, happening now. I think one of the, one of the key things about this grant and our proposed tasks is that it really is going to build off of prior studies. We've had a lot of local expertise focused in Humboldt Bay and also recently more detailed hydraulic modeling in other parts of the bay and using those similar tools to bring some of those more decision-making options to Arcata's shoreline is one thing that will be advancing and building off of prior studies. You know, as I said, the, a key goal is to really develop an adaptation plan that will then inform more decision-making around potential sea level rise adaptation for, especially for capital improvement projects, essential infrastructure. And so when we, we received that grant this summer, in August, we put out a request for qualifications to find an engineering consultant to work on the technical aspects of the modeling and engineering assessment. We received one proposal from GHD with subcontracting with Northern Hydrology Engineering's Jeff Anderson. And both Brett Vivian and Jeff Anderson are here today to provide a bit more detail about what the council can expect from outcomes from the study. So we'll, we'll pass that to them in, in a second. But I also wanted to just share the, the context since we do have a number of sea level rise planning efforts. This study will really inform, you know, those other efforts that are ongoing, a key one of which is the feasibility study for future phases of the wastewater treatment plant. And so that work is being funded separately from, funding from the state water board. And we have technical assistance from the Rural Community Assistance Corporation, RCAC. And that work, we, we put out a request for qualifications earlier this summer. And that went out really broadly. We are in the final sort of steps of procurement for a consultant for that study. And I, and RCAC is the third party that's leading this. So I expect that we'll have next steps from RCAC here in the next week or two. For that, you know, one of the main goals is really to meet the California Coastal Commission's special condition that they included in our wastewater treatment plant phase one study to complete a coastal hazards adaptation and implementation plan. And so this study will really be informing the work that the feasibility study will be doing focused specifically around coastal hazards on our current wastewater treatment plant location, future treatment plant locations, or what other treatment alternatives we could consider. So just wanted to provide an update on the, on the timing for that study, since I know there's a lot of interest, and share how these two efforts are connected. I wanted to see if there's any questions on, on that kind of connectivity before I pass it to Brett to talk more in detail about what we can expect as outcomes from this study.
All right. Any preliminary questions before we dig into what the study will look like? Okay, well, I would say take it away then.
All right. Thanks so much for the opportunity to present on this upcoming project. We're really excited about the opportunity and looking forward to working with the city and as always with, with NHE. So the study area you can see in the graphic kind of extends larger, you know, focused on the, on the, on the, on the coastal area between just west of McDaniel Slough down to Rocky Gulch, or just south of the, of the bayside cutoff, and then extending in landward. And really, our focus is kind of, if you think about it, from the levees or the dikes and then looking, looking landward. So there's been some great previous studies and work done to date. And that really established vulnerable areas around the bay and, you know, and certainly in the, in the boundaries of Arcata, in the coastal zone. And those vulnerable areas being kind of low-lying areas that are vulnerable or subject to future flooding due to sea level rise and vertical ground motion. There's also been some great work on looking at vulnerable infrastructure and catalog, cataloging that. This identified a range of potential impacts associated with, with regular tidal flooding. So we're really looking forward to kind of building on that, that work. And then starting to incorporate some of the, the latest guidance on, on sea level rise with the latest projections from NOAA or the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. So that was recently released in, in 2022. And we'll be incorporating that as we kind of look to the, to the future and, you know, what, as well as what's happened to date. So as Emily indicated, you know, the real project goal, the goal of this work is to develop an adaptation plan to inform decision-making around sea level rise adaptation and take into account other, other events. And I'll kind of get into that, but, but looking at rainfall and, and river flooding as well. So to, to do this, we've, we've done this with, with the county in their Eureka Slough hydrographic area study a couple of years ago, and then also with the city of Eureka along their shoreline. And so we'll work with the city to define the scenarios that we're, we're looking at. Do hydraulic modeling or simulations of water levels in the, in the bay, so simulation of different tidal events and fluvial flooding events or rainfall events and, and other atmospheric conditions such as, such as wind and, and consideration of groundwater. And then characterize the risk. So risk being really what's the likelihood of an event happening? And then what's the consequence of that event? And then identify the adaptation strategies. So, you know, looking at the, the scenarios, that's step one, looking at tides, tides and wind, tides and fluvial events or rainfall events and storms, and then consideration of groundwater. Do hydraulic modeling or simulations really to see where do we get that, where does that flooding start? So where does it overtop the levees or the dikes? Or where does it come out of the, of the rivers and streams? What's the pathway that it takes over land? So we can understand kind of where it's going and how that's occurring. And then understand the depth and the duration of the flooding, the differences between, you know, a couple inches. You know, we live in a very wet environment up here. And is it kind of similar to typical rainy, rainy day conditions? Or is it something more, more substantial, but kind of evaluate what does that, what does that mean? And then we characterize the, the risk. This is where we really start to focus on the city's infrastructure. And I know there's a lot going on in this table here, but looking at the, the resource or that, that infrastructure in this example, that might be the shoreline protection. So that could be comprised of earthen levees or the rail prism is an example from our Eureka Slough hydrographic area. And then what's the process that it's subject to? Where might things occur? And then characterizing that depth, duration, or the extent. So how much water might come over that, that dike? And is it, in this example, greater than a foot for greater than two hours? And that might cause potential failure of that infrastructure? Or is it shallow, less than a foot, less than two hours, and it's erosion and it can be maybe handled with maintenance? Other examples might be with transportation infrastructure or roads. So thinking about the, the depth of the flooding and again, the, the duration of that. But is it several feet of flooding or, or a foot of flooding that could result in enclosure? Does it result in damage? Or is it shallow, shallow flooding? And it's kind of more nuisance flooding. And maybe the last example is other utilities, thinking about sewer lift stations, when you're, the amount of water coming into a lift station, you know, does that damage the lift station and make that inoperable? Does it limit just access to that, to that station? Or thinking about the, the water lines or the sewer lines? And is it an issue of access to them during, during event? Or can they, can they kind of function as is, similar to kind of wet weather conditions? And then using all that to develop adaptation strategies. So this is an example from the work we did in Eureka in and around their wastewater treatment plant on the south end of town. And again, fairly busy, busy graphic. But if you look on the left side, what we're looking at is how can we, where is there room to potentially retreat from, from the shoreline and move some infrastructure back or elevate certain areas of the, of the, of the roadways or the rail prism? And then if you look over kind of towards the right of the graphic, you, looking at, how can we pull back utility lines to change the alignment so that you can access those in the future? But really looking at kind of incremental steps to adapt to a changing environment, whether that be from sea level rise or storm events or increasing groundwater. And that is the general overview. So we haven't started the work, but some examples from, from some previous projects. And yeah, happy to answer any questions. And I may defer to my colleague Jeff.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Yeah, looking at those graphics too, it seems like this is going to be some really exciting and helpful work that I know we've all been waiting to see. So do we have any questions from the council here?
Yeah. First, I just want to thank Emily and the staff from Environmental Services for all their hard work on this grant. And I'm really glad that the city did receive this and that it's GHD, very competent consulting firm, seeing that you've done a lot of work here in our area, as you've shown with HCOG, City Eureka, Caltrans, Humboldt County in general, I think also in Trinidad. I am satisfied that they're going to be working hand in hand with our local coastal staff and the California Coastal Commission in the city. And I'm happy to recommend and award this contract. And finally, I am really happy that this is going to inform the wastewater treatment feasibility study that's upcoming. And then most importantly, it's going to be updating our local coastal program. So I am curious in if, how is it, or will it incorporate some of the, the City of Arcata 2018 sea level rise vulnerability assessment that was done by Alderaan Laird?
Yeah, absolutely. So Alderaan did some, some great work in identifying the vulnerable infrastructure and characterizing some of the, the potential impacts to that, kind of more associated with, with regular tidal, tidal flooding. And we'll start to look at some of the episodic events as well as advance some of that, that regular flooding and characterize kind of more site-specific. I think I like to think of these studies as starting more broad and then starting to hone in to, to really get to more so the advancement in the sense of what can we do about this now? What sort of projects can we do? But yeah, absolutely using, using that 2018 study by Alderaan.
Do we have any other questions?
I was just going to say, there's a lot of concern about the gateway area and what's going to happen there. And I'm assuming in some ways you'll be addressing that and, and the aging. I know that Jeff, you were involved with Alderaan when we had that study session. Thank you for being here for that. And so I'm assuming you probably will have some kind of recommendations and we'll know what's going to happen.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to work with the city to identify the scenarios that we're going to look at. So that should cover, you know, future scenarios and flooding and the footprint of, of that flooding. And then I would imagine, yeah, that would include portions of, of the gateway that may be vulnerable.
Half of it, actually. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Not seeing any other questions or comments from the council, I will open it up to public comments. So if you're here in person, please come to the podium now. And if you're on Zoom, raise your Zoom hand.
Before your time on the council, I just wanted to let you know that the city actually had a very good plan. And their plan was they pointed towards the hills and said the future of Arcata is towards the hills, not towards the bay. And they never had a formal, you know, study on where the wastewater treatment plant would go. But they all seemed to agree that informally that the best place was the southern section of the gateway plant. So I just want to be clear on that because, because of phase one of this wastewater treatment plant that was all agreed upon, and that's part of this second study that you're doing, that you have a set amount of time to figure that out. And also, there's no guarantee, I think a lot of these studies are, you know, your next phase two for the wastewater treatment plant is, which is levy improvement, which there's no guarantee that the coastal commission is even going to do that. I mean, they're, they're pretty sensitive of that. So you have to look at what this long-term planning is. And unfortunately, this study, second study, isn't even going to be done till like, according to your records, which I wasn't even aware of, summer 2024. So you need to make decisions based on these studies, not, not make a decision way before the studies are out, which seems to be the way that we've been going. We're voting, we're voting to put a lot, a lot of money and time that's being spent on putting it in the coastal zone, which is, is a huge gamble. It's no guarantee that the coastal commission may just say, you're crazy, we're not going to do this. So I just question why this is going this way. You're supposed to be doing studies first, then making decisions, not making decisions first and waiting for the study to come out two, two years later. And I mean, we see governments that are like China or Mother Russia make decisions and then everybody goes along with it. But here in the, the US, we're supposed to be, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars for all these studies. So we're supposed to be taking these studies seriously. And then we're supposed to listen to what the experts say and make decisions based on those studies, not the other way around. I mean, we have quite a bit of this country that doesn't believe in global warming. And they just think it's a hoax and it's just the weather. But I'm starting to find that there's a lot of progressives out here that seem to agree with the end results, that let's just build in these areas that are really risky. And that's exactly what the conservatives out there are, want to do too. But just a reminder, the federal government has billions and not trillions of dollars of problems with, you know, it's on the news every week of all these areas that got built and they're having to rebuild them. And people are, are being devastated by it. So let's make a smart decision.
So climate change and risk and mitigation adaptations really become important to me in the climate change scenarios. And I, I think we are probably at a point where there are some feedback loops, tipping points or whatever. And I've been watching and listening to some webcasts about, from the Columbia Climate School and my friend Andrew Revkin, who hosts these with a lot of experts on various issues. And a lot of attention now is being turned, not so much that is climate change happening and what's happening, but to the risk assessment and what you presented here, the characterizing the risk, the likelihood and the consequences. And I think. And I think I'm really interested in bold letters, the likelihood and consequences of what's happening with sea level rise and other aspects of climate change in our region. So thank you for your presentation and your work and your expertise. And risk assessment is just so important for communities now. A lot of the webcasts I watched involved the hurricanes of Florida, but we have our significant West Coast challenges. And sea level rise here in this region is really, really important. So thank you, and I look forward to the bold lettered risk assessment, likelihood, consequences report. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Fred Wise. I greatly appreciate the study and the work that went into staff getting the grant funding for it. The study is on sea level rise. The more important and the more immediate issue in the gateway area is emerging groundwater and the effects of king tide levels and breaching of dikes. If this is not included in the study, then I may ask the council to consider an additional study on this. Emerging groundwater will affect the design of the foundations, will affect the design of the road construction. And as Alderaan Laird has pointed out, there's it affects the underground utilities in the gateway area. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Do we have any comments online?
We do. It looks like we just have one. Go ahead, Jane.
We seem to have a pattern here. I just wanted to thank you ever so much for getting this grant and pursuing this as seriously as you are, because I think it's extremely important. I think it'd be very useful to have as part of this study, an understanding of the elevation of the various opportunity zones that have been laid out and in what order they should be ideally pursued due to sea level rise, the nature of the soils and the extent to which water emergence is going to be a problem and have those particular areas identified so that it's a site specific evaluation. So I also think it would be useful to identify in this process where on earth we can move the wastewater treatment plant to in order to address this. And and I don't understand quite what the coastal commission's evaluation is of the building in the coastal zone. I don't think we have, we haven't finished updating the 1980s, late 1980s coastal commission agreement. So I think that needs to be looked at and see what needs to be done with respect to that, whether if we decide to build large structures in the coastal zone subject to sea level rise issues over 20 to 60 years. Is the coastal commission going to be in favor of that? And at what point they would likely intervene? Anyway, I'm very glad you're doing this, and I hope you will release the proposal or the contract so we can review it and understand what you are proposing, exactly what you are proposing to do, and that you will report back periodically so we are potentially informed as to what you're concluding. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Jane. Do we have any other comments online?
We don't have any other comments online. I did just want to point out that the proposal is attached to the staff report, and we are actually looking for an action on this item, which is perhaps already made as a motion.
Could I just ask a quick question? And it probably was in there, and I apologize if I missed it. But when will the assessment be completed?
The full study, we're really looking to have all deliverables kind of by January of 2025. But a lot of the modeling is going to be really started getting started this fall. And then of the both the setting up the scenarios we want to analyze as well as the modeling and carrying that forward through 2024. For the just of thinking of the studies that are other studies that are underway, you know, the local coastal plan program update is, you know, on a similar, it will take a number, you know, general plan focus, you know, now then shifting to local coastal program, as well as the wastewater treatment plant's feasibility study, we really will not get started until later this fall at the earliest for at least taking place for a year. So we're really, that's a long way to say we're looking at 2024 being a big focus for all of these studies.
So the reason I ask is when I was on the planning commission, some commissioners, including myself, were asking the question, isn't this the cart before the horse? When we were getting ahead of ourselves, some of us were thinking that maybe we would have wanted these studies before we completed the gateway area plan. And I guess I'm wanting to know, will this still be able to inform the gateway area plan? And then also to the questions that both Fred and Jane had asked about emergency groundwater, will that be included in the study? And then also to address, Jane, it did say in the report that the study would address the wastewater treatment plant alternatives, correct? That was a lot, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, so the wastewater treatment plant alternatives are being addressed in the separate study that I've talked about.
Right, that's gonna.
Yes, so that is not under this contract. That is above, you know, today. But that's the main focus of the concurrent study.
Right.
Yes. And then there, you know, I can let Brett speak to more of the groundwater modeling that will be, you know, part of, a little bit of part of the model, but we're really focused on a lot of the more fluvial and wind wave action components.
Yeah, there there will be considerations for for groundwater kind of on the best available data. We won't be building a groundwater model. That's a, it's a very large effort with a lot of, a lot of data to to put in. But there will be considerations for that and its relativity to to sea levels and how that might change in with sea level rise. But that is, yeah, a part of the proposal and was a part of the the scope for the for the grant to consider groundwater.
So I guess what what I'm hearing from the community is the concern of with half of the gateway area plan actually being affected by sea level rise, how this report, will it still be able to inform before we decide to build, say, eight stories in the Barrow District, which is seven stories, but it can be 80 feet. So and also if they use the state bonus density program, it could go even higher by up to two more stories. So it could indeed be eight, could be as much as nine or 10. No, okay. So the state density bonus will cap out at eight? Feet, 80 feet? Well, but that's the thing is, is that you can do seven stories, which could be 80 feet. So we're still looking in actuality of, you know, 80 feet is eight stories. So kind of the same.
So I don't want to get too much into any discussion about gateway because Alex is here and that's not appropriate.
Right.
And also, I just want to maybe ask the question and kind of drive the point that anything that's going to be developed in the coastal zone will need a coastal development permit by the coastal commission, correct?
Yes.
So even if we approve a gateway plan that has housing zoning in areas that do include the coastal zone, it cannot be built there without a coastal development permit, correct? Okay.
And that's been true for a very long time. You always have to get approval from the coastal commission if you're building within that area. So this isn't something new.
And we're not building anything.
Yeah, no, I understand that the final improvement of development, the city shoreline is going to be retained by the California Coastal Commission per the Coastal Act. And that jurisdiction is all covered with the former tidelands and current shoreline. I guess, again, we're putting all this work in and then we're going to make decisions that we don't really have the information before we make the decisions that we might. I mean, it is what it is. I just wish that these studies would have come before.
But my feeling is if you aren't studying something, if you aren't looking and making projections, it could be out at Mad River. That was a whole discussion we had about what is going to happen out in where we have the development in Mad River? What is going to happen if we had a dam break up at Ruth Lake? How much water is going to come into Valley West? How far is it going to come? So does that mean that we should not have thought about allowing that development to occur? Because maybe one day we'd have a dam break, maybe, maybe not. So I think you have to think about what are you going to do? And then you get information about what you can do and not do. And it's just putting it all together. And I think our planning is, has to go like that.
So but part of resiliency planning is to interject these possibilities so that we don't say oops, you know, later after the fact. So I I just think it is imperative that the city and the consultants actively engage with each other with our local coastal planning program. And again, it would have, it is what it is. And maybe the grants weren't available, I don't know. But it would have been nice to somehow have some of this information beforehand because it's been quite contentious and divisive about where we're going to put these buildings. And had this information been available before, actually to no fault of GHD, of course, we might have been able to, it might have been easier process to do this.
But you know, to think about that, we shouldn't build it all in this whole region because we have earthquakes. And so, you know, you have to, so we're going to say, oh, no more building because we have earthquakes. We don't know where it'll happen, what part, which will be the worst or so forth. But you have to do planning or you just get hodgepodge. And maybe that's what people want, is just hodgepodge. But I don't believe so. I believe that we want good planning for our community.
Which would include not building directly where we know it's going to be underwater.
So I would like to center us back around the proposal at hand from GHD to award them this contract to do this adaption and planning service that we were all so excited about. So let's go back to being excited about the sea level planning. And I will entertain a motion in a second. We've taken public comment and let's do it.
I'll make a motion to award the grant to GHD. And I don't have the, I closed my, thank you.
It's for, it's for $154,890.
You want to make the motion go hard?
Yeah, I can. For sea level right, for Arcata sea level rise, vulnerability and adaptation planning services and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, folks. And thank you, Brett, for being here. And thank you, Emily. And thank you to the whole team. All right, that'll now take us to item B, and we are going to receive an update from Caltrans Climate Change Adaptation Branch Chief Clancy De Smet on the Eureka Arcata Corridor Long Term Sea Level Rise Comprehensive Adaptation and Implementation Plan. And we will have a brief introduction from City Engineer Netra Katri.
Good evening, council. And, okay, good evening, everybody. So yes, I was not preparing for a staff report, but this is a perfect segue. Okay, this is a perfect segue as we are talking about the sea level rise. And I happened to see a presentation from Caltrans on corridor between Arcata and Eureka, and it was a great presentation on sea level rise. So when we talked about sea level rise, this came up, and I asked Caltrans staff Clancy to do a presentation, and he said, yes, I will do a presentation for City of Arcata. So here he is, and hopefully he is able to share his screen.
Yep, you should be able to share your screen, Clancy. Looks like he's working on it. Yep, you should be coming.
Can folks hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. So good evening. I'm Clancy De Smet, a senior specialist for Caltrans District One. Uh, sorry, my audio is kind of, hang on a sec. So I'm here to give an update on the comprehensive adaptation and implementation plan. All right, I've got an echo, so I just gotta, sorry about that. All right, folks can hear me right? Okay, so I'm here to give an update on the the comprehensive adaptation and implementation plan. First off, Caltrans will make every effort to ensure non discrimination in all of its services, programs, and activities, whether they are federally funded or not, and that services and benefits are fairly distributed to all people regardless of race, color, or national origin. In addition, Caltrans will facilitate meaningful participation in the transportation planning process in a non discriminatory manner. Most days I feel inundated with the most popular climate stressor, sea level rise, but there are many other climate stressors we face in District One. For example, increased temperatures, wildfires, flooding, and storm surge, as well as clip retreat. I'm going to talk about the Eureka Arcata Corridor project. The Eureka Arcata Corridor project consists of five component projects within a six mile segment along Highway 101 on the side of Humboldt Bay. The corridor is identified as critical because it's the primary transportation hub in Humboldt County where there are few alternate routes. It contains essential utility lines, residential businesses, and recreational amenities that can be affected by sea level rise and flooding. Most sections of the shoreline along EA Corridor are of high or moderate risk. In 2019, the coastal commission issued us coastal development permit for these five component projects. The CDP, which covers the Eureka Arcata Corridor project, specifically incorporated two climate change related special conditions into the project approval. Special condition one, sea level rise and flooding impact monitoring and reporting. We report king tides and other storm surges and wind wave action that causes, that could cause problems along 101. And special condition two, which is the long term sea level rise comprehensive adaptation and implementation plan. The coastal commission has set the pace. It's due in December of 2025. The annual report also documents closures due to flooding or king tides or any other hazards along the highway. It's, I'm happy to report that no flooding or coastal hazards occurred during the study period of 2020 to 2023. The mean sea level for the baseline report in 2020 through the mean sea level for 2023 shows that it was 3.8 feet in 2020, and it's 3.89 feet in 2023. So no, no real changes. These are the areas along the corridor that we document the king tides. And we go to the same spot every year, and we have a report that I can furnish at the end of the presentation or just get it to nature later. So, you know, Spott, Ganon Slough, Jacoby Creek, North Braket, South Braket, Indianola, the Redwood Company, all the way to the Slough. Here's some king tide photos from the last cycle from 2022 and 2023. As I said before, there were no temporary closures or impacts along the road. And, yeah. However, there's a need for immediate action now. In 2019, Caltrans contracted with ICF to assess vulnerabilities along the corridor. The figure shown here is from that report, and it shows the corridor broken into multiple segments with projected inundation dates. The red segment closest to the city of Eureka has inundation projected by 2030. Short term and long term solutions will have to run concurrently in this effort. We're in the process of finalizing a model agreement between Caltrans District One and Cal Poly Humboldt for subject matter expertise and technical study needs for the CAIP. The contract between Cal Poly and and Caltrans will involve two major CAIP related tasks. Task one, evaluate existing and anticipated conditions. And task two, review of conceptual conceptual adaptation strategies and develop strategies for analysis and assessment. Task one includes compiling and summarizing existing long term planning and assessment efforts by Caltrans and other experts such as GHD. And task two will 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 guide, will guide our internal project development team through the conceptual projects to develop guidance for natural armoring systems. There are several adaptation strategies that we're exploring: retreat, protect, accommodate, and the most promising, which is the hybrid strategy. So this slide shows the basic sea level rise strategies that are, we're continuing to evaluate. The first strategy we are, excuse me, are continuing to evaluate is protect. Early investigation in this strategy has resulted in a concept referred to as a gradual progression of an earthen berm highway. It's a flexible approach that is scalable and can happen through several projects rather than all at once. It aims to avoid the use of hard armoring by simply raising the roadway prism. The initial project is estimated to have a construction cost of approximately $100 million, with subsequent projects costing approximately $20 million every 10 years. While the project aims to minimize right of way acquisitions over the next few decades, it is expected to affect approximately 10 to 50 parcels. An approach such as this may be the quickest project delivery time, and it works within the existing right of way limits. The next strategy we continue to evaluate is accommodate. Full accommodation of the, on the corridor would require an elevated causeway to be constructed between Eureka Slough Bridge and Highway 101 and State Route 255 interchange. Again, some high level pros and cons are listed to the right. An estimated construction cost for a full structural causeway is anticipated to cost between 2.5 to $10 billion. Depending on the final alignment and the highway connection details, this strategy could affect between 25 and 75 parcels. could affect between 25 and 75 parcels. The project delivery timeline for an alternative such as this is expected to be not as fast as a gradual progression of the earthen berm highway. Full retreat is another strategy that remains on the table. This would require a major highway realignment. One such alternative that has been briefly evaluated is retreating to US one retreating US 101 to Old Arcata Road, which is an existing collector road for communities along Humboldt Bay. This alternative also has a high anticipated cost of approximately $1 to $3 billion with significant community impacts. An alternative such as this would likely require a long a long project delivery time due to significant community impacts associated with converting a collector road into a larger facility. The most likely strategy to be utilized is the hybrid strategy, in which the corridor will be assessed through multiple segments with some segments leaning on one or more strategies. Knowing exactly what this looks like is at the time at this time, it remains premature as there is almost an infinite number of alternatives for the hybrid approach. At this time, it is simply important to know that all options remain on the table, including minor and micro realignments that could and this approach is also a scale scalable or modular approach. Assuming this approach maintains the same or assuming that this approach maintains the same alignment, and it would still affect approximately 100 parcels. Anticipated cost is unspecified. However, we do have some ideas to share with you today that would spark conversation with our partners and collaborators. This here is just one example of what a hybrid strategy could look like. While the structural causeways lean on an accommodate strategy, the earthen berm and the earthen berm leans on a protect strategy, sustainability and resiliency are the primary focus while assessing the corridor segments such as this. You'll notice that there is an incorporation of living shorelines, and the structural causeways are intentionally placed and developed to support habitat restoration and marshland retreat for those living shorelines. For conceptual purposes only, we have included some pictures here to help illustrate the differences, and more importantly, the transitions from one segment to the next within the corridor. Again, you will see here is simply a conceptual idea that represents just one of the alternatives. An approach such as this aims not only to be cost-effective by utilizing a combination of strategies, but it could enhance environmental quality and habitat. While the previous slide demonstrated a conceptual ultimate facility buildout, the hybrid approach is modular, and knowing it may take multiple projects to get to that point, this slide here simply represents one project that could be developed sooner than later. The concept leans on a strategy of accommodate where the two tide gates would be removed and replaced with single span bridges. In addition to restoring connectivity of the sloughs, a new network of levee trails could also be developed. Again, like I said, we're kind of having short-term and near and long-term issues. So in order to address like enhance in order to address like the likelihood that we might have some regular overtopping by 2030, we're working on a project initiation document right now that has an initial raising of the corridor. However, it's however, to remain proactive, the purpose of the project is just to reduce any loss of service. From an aerial perspective, the initial project within the approach is simple. It maintains the existing alignment and simply raises the minimum elevation of the highway to an adequate elevation to avoid overtopping. So the benefits of the approach are it's a hedge against uncertainty, it's proactive, it provides additional time for community engagement and to develop a comprehensive Short-term and long-term projects will be required to address the adaptation needs as it relates to sea level rise on the corridor. So this is slides just showing how we're going to have multiple projects over the next several decades. Our public engagement plan was developed in fall 2021, and it helps create an identity to the process. We've also created a website with climate change-related information for Caltrans District One. There are ways to stay informed and to participate on the site, and there's a section called Clancy's Climate Corner. I urge you to check it out. Now, if you'll bear with me, I'll attempt to present a video from Clancy's Climate Hi, I'm Clancy DeSmet, Climate Change Adaptation Branch Chief for Caltrans District One. At Caltrans, we know that climate change is a serious threat to the North Coast. That includes the 2,400 miles of state highways maintained across Del Norte, Humboldt, Mendocino, and Lake Counties. In addition to serving as vital transportation routes, these roads often serve as main streets in our communities, and climate change is impacting each one in varied and unique ways, from devastating wildfires and landslides to coastal erosion and sea level rise. District One is enhancing our efforts to add resiliency to roads that are vulnerable to climate change, and we've launched a website to keep track of those efforts, northcoastclimateaction.org. On the site, you'll find information about planning and projects along the Highway 101 Corridor and in each of the four counties covered by District One. We recognize that Caltrans isn't the only agency working on climate change in the region, so we'll continue to partner with local stakeholders and local agencies moving forward, and we hope that you'll join us. One last thing, our vision of the comprehensive plan is a collaborative implementation strategy of short-term and long-term projects, the protection of critical resources and habitat, and to create a community-wide awareness of climate change and risks. Some of our key assumptions are many adaptation projects will depend on the availability of funding, and adaptation projects will need to minimize environmental impacts. Projects will need to be based on the least environmentally damaging feasible alternative. Projects that enlarge or expand hard armoring will be limited under coastal act policies, and it's going to, like I said, require an incremental approach. And that's it, and I'll take questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Clancy. We appreciate it. Do we have any questions from the council?
Well, I would just say, I don't know how much money this is all going to, you know, take over the years, but what about Old Arcata Road in Myrtle? Has that ever been thought of as changing that into the main highway?
Yeah, I mean, we have to look at all all the options from protect, accommodate, to retreat, and we have to look at that. And I had a slide in my presentation that discussed the retreat to Old Arcata Road, and and one of the problems is that that road is a collector road, and so it wasn't ever designed to take as much traffic as goes along Highway 101. So if we were to do that, we'd probably have an environmental justice issue with the amount of property acquisition and the amount of traffic and pollution that we would be putting onto that road. And so we'd have a lot of impacts to that community, to those communities that reside along that road. So we're going to consider it, but I doubt I doubt that will be the final solution.
Well, I'm aware of that, but I just thought, you know, we have so many discussions about doing this and not doing that, and we're putting a lot of money into 101, and we're putting a trail system in, and it's going to be the Great American Trail, and so forth and so on. Then you think about how much money is there and what we'd be able to do somewhere else. So I just thought I'd bring it up because it's, you know, whatever.
Yeah, I appreciate your opinion.
I had a question, and it may just I was you talked about the hybrid and the most likely hybrid would be to protect with accommodate. And I noticed that with the Old Arcata Road as a retreat, and you mentioned that it's going to have huge, significant community impacts, and it's going to take a lot longer. Would that ever come into the picture as a possible hybrid? Like, let's just say, you know, we have the worst possible scenario, and we haven't completed this project. What would that look like, I guess? Is there alternatives? Can we use that as a until we can really build up our hybrid of protect and accommodate? Or sometimes when I'm driving down the corridor, I see, you know, that it's the water is getting close, and I just wonder, you know, it's obviously way out of my area of expertise. So if there doesn't sound like very intelligent questions, I apologize.
Yeah, like I said before, we're going to, you know, evaluate like most of the alternatives. And and like I said, you know, one that protects habitat and maintains continuity and protects the facility is probably the likeliest one. I doubt that we'll retreat all the way to Old Arcata Road, but we could have micro alignments that retreat in certain ways east or west along the corridor.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Do we have any other questions from the council before we open it up to public comment? All right, let's take it to the public.
Clancy, my name's Joanne McGary, and I was at the Coastal Commission meeting in September of 2019 where a presentation was made by Caltrans on the first day about the Indianola cutoff, and now we are seeing the work being completed there for that dangerous spot on the highway. The second day, Aldron Laird gave a presentation on sea level rise that had the Coastal Commission literally dropping their jaws about the big, huge concern about sea level rise and the impacts on the 101 corridor. And we're recognizing that that was a priority for the Coastal Commission to consider, and yet they'd already gone ahead with the Indianola. And we also, as Councilmember Stillman mentioned, the bay trail development. So I'm just, you know, again, I appreciate what you're sharing with us, but the urgency of what I think is happening faster and faster, what what do you personally think needs to happen? And with all this money spent on the trail and on the Indianola cutoff, is that being taken into consideration in any type of hybrid modeling?
Absolutely. And just for the record, the Indianola undercrossing was one of the components that was permitted in that hearing that you were at in 2019. So it wasn't it wasn't it wasn't built before the permit. The condition of the permit requires us to do a long-term plan. And then the good news about the bay trail is it's going to raise the railroad prism about a foot or so, and so we're going to have some short-term resiliency as that gets built up. So it's going to buy us a little bit of time while we develop the final solution.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to look at your Clancy's Corner and hopefully be in touch with you if I have any further questions. Thanks.
Please do.
Okay, we'll take our next commenter, please.
In the late 1890s is when all these levees pretty much were built, and I would just point out that that was devastating to the indigenous population and to the environment. And to the environment, we lost probably tens of thousands of acres of wetlands, which in the state of California, I believe it's 95% of our wetlands are gone. So I think the concern was what we do in the future that we, I mean, mentioned hybrid, and maybe this is a possibility, that when we build if we build on top of these levees from the 1880s, where basically anything on the bay side is going to be underwater because of sea level rise. So the only chance that we have of survival for our wetlands in the future are probably these pasture lands that were drained in the 1890s, and that will be the only only chance for species in the future to survive. And that's one of the things that we have to be really thinking about, because I've looking at the Red Book just recently, and we've lost millions of species around the world. And so it isn't just this California issue, it's it's a big issue, and wetlands is is the number one productive land there is, and we have very little of it. But luckily, in Humboldt County, we have a lot of possibilities, and that's to the west and to the south. On Cal, I think Caltrans did a pretty nice restoration on the south side of Samoa Boulevard there. That's a big wetland project. So that's what I'm talking about, that we're going to be losing all this wetlands because of sea level rise. And if we build on top of the of the levees, and we need to have all these possibilities of particular space and how you're going to deal with that with landowners that it's pasture land in the future. And I think there's been some work with the 30%, which is an initiative all around the world, but even in California, about how we need to identify particular areas if we're even going to have a chance for anything to survive in the future. So I would also say this is a very expensive operation. We're just talking about the 101, but we're also talking about levees all over the all around around the city and how that influences what we do in the future. And I don't think the money we have is going to come from our local government. I think it's going to we're going to be asking our our state, which is about $32 billion deficit, and our federal government, which is about $33 trillion right now. So it seems to me that we need to do the smart thing and try to retreat as much as possible, but I think with the 101, that's going to be a little bit trickery tricky. So it's going to be probably some kind of hybrid. Thanks.
Okay, next next comment, please.
Thank you. I'm Fred Wise. Thank you, Netra, for facilitating this presentation. Excellent. The Caltrans study shown here cover the period from 2020 to 2023. The king tide storm surge event of 2005, 101 was completely covered with water and was closed. I spoke with the Planning Commission in January for about six minutes. I had interviewed Aldron Laird and presented a summary of my interview video, and the transcript of what I said is on arcataone.com. There are 11 articles, Arcata One, about sea level rise. Aldron points out that just one foot of sea level rise will result in king tides exceeding current disaster declaration conditions, just one foot, which could happen in 20 years. So it is not the median high tide, says the issue is storm surge and king tide combination, and this will affect 101 and the Gateway Area. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Do we have any comments on Zoom? We just have one. Go ahead, Jane.
We continue our sequence. I just wanted to comment that you noted that with the new trail, it's going to add about a foot elevation. Did you consider increasing that beyond that? And if not, why not? Is that not permitted by the Coastal Commission? And to what extent are you allowed to reinforce that? And is that a Coastal Commission decision? In parts of Florida, for example, they replant mangroves. I don't know, I'm unaware that we have any mangroves growing in this area, but is there something comparable like oyster beds that aren't being cultivated for oysters, but oyster beds from oyster shells that could be placed into the bay that would basically evolve a barrier of its own? And would it make sense to try to reclaim some of the pasture lands now and reconvert that area to combat storm surge and sea level rise and emergence of groundwater? So I'm just throwing out those questions. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm just writing them down because there's a lot of them. So first of all, the trail is being the trail project is not a Caltrans project. It's the county's project. The decision is up to the Coastal Commission. We are looking at like natural shoreline infrastructure, which would include like oyster shells or other other kinds of natural soft armoring. And, you know, reclaiming the pasture lands, like that's that's someone else's property. So that's another thing that we have to consider, like how we affect other properties along the corridor. And we are going to be considering groundwater intrusion. So I think I got all your comments and questions the best I could do.
All right. Do we have any other comments on Zoom this evening? Okay, now, so I'll bring it back to the council for any final thoughts or questions, or we will just say thank you for enlightening us with that information and a great presentation. So thank you, Clancy.
And I would thank I would thank you also very much.
I'm looking forward to your corner.
Fair enough.
All right. Well, that will now take us into item 12 on our agenda this evening. Right, there's no action on that item. Yes, that's just informational. So we will now move to oral and written communications. Again, this time is provided for people to address the council or submit written communication for matters not on the agenda. Know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda, and the council supported requests that require council action will be set for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers will be limited to three minutes, so if you are here in person, please line up at the podium. If you are on Zoom, raise that Zoom hand, and if you're on the phone, press star nine. All right. It's time, three minutes. Let's go. Line it up.
A friend of mine, Larry Goldberg, posted a post from Kim Kemp showing a video PG&E guests had produced about, are you prepared? And it made me relook at my go-bag, and it also made me want to remind all of us in the community that I really hope that we can have some formal, city-sponsored, perhaps emergency planning for our community, especially about where to go and where resources are for food and shelter and such, you know, should some of us in the lowlands need to go to the highlands. And I just would like a little bit more cohesiveness in our community rather than a chaotic response individually to planning. individually to planning for emergencies, because they are going to come. You know, I could talk about a whole lot of other issues right now, but I'll continue to email you. I thank many of you for responding to my emails. It's been quite interesting, that written exchange. And I hope I get a chance to talk to you outside of these offices at, you know, individually for, on other issues. I just want to reiterate, I'm very, very concerned about the winter time and what we're going to do about our vulnerable people. And I just would like some information coming out sooner as opposed to later, because I'm sitting with them and they're wondering as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you. Very briefly, going back to what I was talking about earlier, about the mayor of Bratislava, capital of Slovakia, the article is titled, Can Better Public Spaces Revolutionize the Way We Live? And that's what he's into, is providing better public spaces and people thrive and prosper as a result. Among what he's doing in his city is reducing traffic lanes and putting in wider bike lanes as much as he can. There's an old town area of the city, which includes a group of pedestrian-only streets. Again, this is a medieval European city, doesn't apply to Arcata so much. I want to make sure that it's clear to you that I'm not telling you how to do your job. It's not how I feel one little bit. What I do is alert you to what I think is important. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred. Next comment, please.
In the paper about a week ago, there was a college student that was hit by a car and pretty serious. They were rushed down to Santa Rosa. I think they had to have like four, a female that had four surgeries because of the trauma to her brain to release the pressure. So I know this has been a subject matter, because we've had, you know, a couple of people, we've had a mother that necroswalked with her child, you know, we have had another college student that's died. And what is actually going on from the standpoint of our policing? Because I know this, I wasn't here this night, but I remember the council bringing up, addressing one alternative was to lower the speed limit, which I would disagree with that from the standpoint. I think we have a number of people in town that are very good at obeying the speed limits, and they're good drivers, and they're looking out for people and behaving well. And we have another section of folks that are driving at whatever speed they want. And that's the problem. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's safe even to necroswalk, to tell you the truth, because it's just all the different factors of what's going on with drivers. We have drivers that are, you know, simple things that you can get from the insurance company. They're texting, they're drinking, they're doing drugs beforehand, they're just not paying attention to the road. And we don't have any policing. I've said this a number of times, no one's ever said, you're wrong. In five years, I've never seen anybody pull over anybody for speeding, for, I mean, just crazy driving. And I've even talked to some of these folks, and, you know, they're not worried, because they'll say to my face, and I'll agree with it, that they're not afraid of the Arcata police of stopping them, because nobody's stopping them at all. So that is a big factor. That's what you don't seem to understand, is that if there isn't enforcement, there's a certain section of people that are just going to have bad behavior. And every city in the U.S. knows this. That's why they put traffic cameras up. That's why people get tickets, because it's unfortunately, they get a little, they get a ticket in the mail that lets them know that their behavior is not acceptable. And we need to do have something like that, because it's unacceptable for how small this town is and how many people have been seriously injured or killed. So I don't know why I have to bring this up so many times. And I don't think I'm being harsh. I think it's a fact that, that for whatever reason, I don't know if it's a lack of resources, but I've been told that we've hired another, quite a few police officers now. So I don't see any change. And without any change, we're going to continue to see people that are injured or killed.
Okay, do we have any public comment online? Is Jane there? Okay, take it away, Jane.
Last but not least, of course, I want to commend you all for taking this, these issues seriously and being open to public comment. It's unfortunate more of us aren't here. You had the same for pretty much commenting tonight, one after the other, each time. It would be nice if we had more views expressed here, and I know you do get online communications, which is great. We have no idea what those are, of course, because they don't show up in public. But it would be great if we could encourage more people to do so. A couple of us have written articles to appear in the Mad River Union and North Coast Journal in advance of the September 25th Open House, basically, at the D Street Neighborhood Center. And I know you have been advised or recommended not to go. However, that's exactly what needs to happen, that you should go. You don't have to talk to each other. But the whole purpose is to get public input. And there's nothing quite beats having an opportunity to talk one-on-one with people individually about their concerns and not have a two- or three-minute time limit. And then they can perhaps clarify those. I recommended earlier that you should hopefully advertise this, since we haven't seen anything but something online that we received, and I don't know how many people actually received it. We went ahead and did articles. So we really would like people to come, be informed, and get more information on what's happening in the city. And I hope you will encourage city staff, put something in the Time Standard, Los Coast Journal, further announcing this happening. Thank you very much, and hope to see you there.
All right. I believe I did see a little info spot on it in the Union this last week. So it is running in the Union.
You can thank Fred for that.
Well, there we go. Thanks, Fred. It was in the Union. No, no, okay. So I think you can thank the city for that, but maybe by encouragement of others. All right, and we have one more comment online.
We do. Go ahead, Patricia.
All right, I'm going to have to change my voice a little. It's actually dim, but Patricia's phone was on, so hi to council and to staff. And I just wanted to reinforce one point that Fred had made, I think a suggestion that at the meeting on the 25th, or I should say, the Form-Based Code Open House, that the people's written suggestions could be posted and have a chance for people to view. And I think what was proposed at one point, if somebody wanted to be anonymous, they could put them into a box, and otherwise, they could be posted for people to see and have a look at. I also wanted to thank Chief Ahern for all the service. We've been to a lot of meetings over the years that he's been at and other times around town, and always appreciate seeing him and wish him well and everything moving forward. And that's really about it. And thanks.
Right on. Thank you, Jim and Patricia. All right, if that's it online, okay. That will now take us to council and staff reports, and we look ready to go. So Finance Director Tabitha Miller has a presentation on Senate Bill 252 and 253.
Good evening. So this actually came up at the August 16 meeting in relationship to some of the payments and the accounts we're setting up for CalPERS. But I wanted to circle back around, because the council had shown some interest in dwelling into this issue a little bit more. So first off, Senate Bill 252, it was introduced by Senators Gonzalez, Stern, and Weiner. And essentially, it prohibits new investments or renewing investments in fossil fuel companies by public, the public employee retirement system, CalPERS, and also the state teachers' retirement system. It required liquidation by July 1 of 2031. A fossil fuel was defined as petroleum oil, natural gas, and thermal coal. A fossil fuel company was one of the 200 largest publicly traded fossil fuel companies as established by carbon content in the company's proven oil, gas, and coal reserves. And then an investment was mutual, included mutual funds and exchange trade funds that had a greater than 2% investment in fossil fuel companies. As an aside, there was also an additional provision that had some importance, which did give a little bit of an out on this to the CalPERS or the CalSTRS board if they found it violated their fiduciary duties. But just to be real clear, the status of this is that as of July 5, the decision, the Chair of the Assembly Committee on Public Employment and Retirement Committee decided not to hear the bill. So it essentially died at that point in time and didn't have a chance for the current, in the current legislative session, to move forward. So it is not one of the bills that made it to the governor's desk for possible signature. But we are certain that it will get a chance again next year, and it has had previous versions that have had similar fates. And it's also kind of noteworthy that it is similar to bills that have happened in other states, many of which also failed this year, but there's hope that those will come forward again in future years. It was interesting to kind of look at some of the support for and opposition to this particular bill. Certainly, not surprisingly, many environmental and climate groups were very supportive of it and advocating for. It had a couple of big names, the State Treasurer Fiona Marr and State Controller Mahala Cohen also have supported this bill. And then there was a real focus particularly by the sponsors in the Senate on labor, organized labor groups, especially those that are dependent on or have received pensions from their members. And groups that actually signed on to support were the California Faculty Association and the California Nurses Association. There were also several noteworthy groups that opposed it in writing, California Professional Firefighters, the State Building and Construction Trades Council, and California State Retirees. One of the interesting things is that the real big players in the California labor market, the California Labor Federation, the Service Employee International Union, or SCIU, and the California Teachers Association, didn't take a stand on this. But what they, what they reported back when asked was really that they had a, that their members were really divided on the issue. They had people who were very much for it, and they had members that were against it, and it put them in an awkward position. Just a noteworthy, CalPERS and CalSTRS both opposed the bill and have in the past also. Just to put it in perspective, CalPERS has about $9.4 billion of their $459 billion in investments. It's about 2%. CalSTRS, it's $5.7 billion of $307 billion and about 1.7% of their investment holdings. So it's significant, but not large in the sense of the total holdings. And they had estimated, those two groups together estimated that it would cost them $327.6 million for 20 years to divest. And the divesting cost is really about the hard cost of having to sell the investments that it's separate from the potential losses or gains that could be, that could be realized from that process. But it's those fees and the staff time and the process of going through it. And this is not the first divestment that CalPERS or CalSTRS has been required by bills or laws to go through. And in 2016, and this was dated, but it was on their website, they estimated that they had lost about $8 billion due to divestments. Interestingly enough, they also noted that there were several that worked in their benefit. So divesting from investments in Sudan, Iran, thermal coal, and firearms, they actually were better off having gone through that process. Tobacco cost them $4.3 billion over the life of getting out of that. And one of the things that they strongly have argued for is being on boards and owning, having investments in these companies gives them a possibility or an opportunity to, for corporate engagement for change, and that they've, they have pushed companies to look differently at those sorts of investments. The League of California Cities is also opposed to this, and their reasoning is very similar. It really comes down to probably my biggest worry, which is the potential for significant investment losses and increased short-term and long-term costs for the agencies, which ultimately come back to local governments. And as the North Coast Journal, I think may have been the last or two papers ago, had an article on the local impact of pension costs on all the local governments. And I think it puts it in perspective when you start thinking about CalPERS is your local, you know, or CalSTRS, your local school district, your agencies, your cities, your county, and even your state organizations. They also note that it can create a conflict with the CalPERS Board of Administration's fiduciary duties to its members. And this is actually set forth in the California Constitution. And it is interesting, because the state of New York pension programs are in the process of divesting their fossil fuels, and they are being sued under that very same idea of fiduciary duty by four of their potential future employees who will get pensions in the future based on that same idea. They've requested that that suit be dismissed, but it'll be kind of interesting to see if that's held up and where that comes out. And then the question is, one of the challenges with divestment is that it's, it's hard to draw that line. There are lots of issues out there, all very good causes to get behind, but when you start picking and choosing your investments, it can get pretty tricky. So one of the other items, if you go through and you look at some of the pro-statements, certainly from the, some of the environmental groups and those who really want to take action on climate change, they, they've done some research on the investments in fossil fuels. And certainly, and I've looked, I haven't looked at every one of them, but I have gone through a few of them. And it is interesting, because they are basically saying that pensions would be better off if they had divested in the past. And it's, they're not wrong. What they're looking at is other investments, they're looking at how the market as a whole has done in that period of time and comparing it to fossil fuels. And, you know, the first one, the Stan.Earth and University of Waterloo, looked, included CalPERS, and actually, CalPERS, Alaska's management, Retirement Management Board, and the New York State Teachers Retirement System, which is one that is in the process of divesting. And determined for that 10-year period there, that they would be better off by about $21 billion. And then the Corporate Knights did one for the Colorado Public Employees Retirement System, almost the same information, and determined that that fund would be, in that 10-year period, better off by about $2.7 million if they excluded fossil fuels. One of the interesting things, though, that I looked at is that they really focused on the market and where there were big gains in certain types of investments. And if you look at it and you think about it, whether or not those pensions would have picked those investments is kind of the question. It's easy in hindsight to look back and say, I think information systems and IT was the biggest gainer in that 10-year period. Of course, looking back, we'd all have wanted to invest in those, you know, if we could go back in the time machine. But we also have to remember that that wasn't too far past the dot-com bubble burst that really hit hard all of the pension plans. So whether or not they would have invested in those companies at that time is sort of one of the issues that comes up. I did find one, one investment that was actually done for the teachers' retirement system in New York, Ford, and it was actually contracted by their controller, BlackRock was the company that did it. And they really pointed this out. They, they went through and talked about the fact that they found that there wasn't any significant, that there wasn't, the impact was minimal on the portfolio for risk and cost. But they did talk about the fact that these tests, when you're looking backwards and investors benefit from having full hindsight, it's difficult to really look at what views would have been in place going forward. And so they, they acknowledged that there was that idea that you could be more profitable, but that you really had to put it in perspective and consider all of the ideas behind it. Just really quickly, just a kind of a placeholder, this is as of the most current actuarial reports we have from CalPERS. They came out just this last month. And you can see our plan assets are just under $70 million. Plan liability obviously is much higher at $100.6 million, which leaves our actuarial unfunded liability at just under $31 million. And our funded ratio is now below 70% when you look at all our funds together. You will notice that unfortunately, our two largest funds, which are the miscellaneous and the safety, which are the top two, have the largest assets, the largest liability, and also the lowest funded rate, unfortunately. So just kind of focusing, the other thing that kind of happened with this, and I thought it was interesting, that two climate action bills, 253 and 261, came along and actually moved to the governor's just, just recently. But I thought it would be interesting to look at those, because there really is this focus on climate, and there's a lot of action happening at the state. They were approved by the legislature, and the governor has already said publicly that he will sign them. And I think he even referred them, to them being landmark bills. One requires the 5,300 companies that have more than $1 billion in revenue to disclose their greenhouse gas emissions. billion dollars in revenue to disclose their greenhouse gas emissions. And this includes not just the company's impacts, but their suppliers and their consumers. They did move out some of the penalty dates and give some reprieve to that at the last minute last week. And then 261 will require companies to disclose financial risk from climate change and measures to reduce those risks and make those reports available on their website. So it's obviously about more transparency into these issues. And a couple other kind of noteworthy things that just happened in the last week when it comes to fossil fuels and climate change. You probably have seen in the news that our state is suing ExxonMobil, Shell, Chevron, ConocoPhillips, BP, and American Petroleum for knowingly deceiving the public about the risk of fossil fuels causing harm to communities and the environment. We're also seeing, as I mentioned, other pension systems embracing divestment. State of New York, the state of Maine, the California university system has already gone, gone this route. And there were bills similar to, to 252 in Oregon, New Jersey, and Vermont. They were not successful, but everybody anticipates that those will be back every year for a while. And then, of course, Governor Newsom, at the Climate Week in New York City, announced that he would sign these two bills, and made a point of saying that he never talks about what bills he'll sign ahead of time, but this was landmark. So they seem to be important. And I'm just going to throw this out, even though it's kind of unrelated, because it's important and it's, it's one of the few things I pay attention to on the, on what's coming forward. But two proposed amendments that will come to voters in November of 2024. The first one is, is the one to lower the necessary vote threshold from 2/3 to a supermajority to 55% to approve local general obligation bonds and special taxes that would be used for affordable housing and public infrastructure projects to make those a little bit easier for communities to get in place. And then the Assembly Constitutional Amendment 13, which would require future ballot measures that increase voter approval requirements to also pass by the same margin. And this is really the idea of not allowing a vote of 50 plus one to implement a 2/3 requirement for future changes. But it also would reserve the right for asking advisory questions on the local ballots. And I know this is just information, but if I can answer questions, I'm happy to.
I would really like it if you could, could we get this PowerPoint? Because I'd just like to go back and be able to look at some of these bills and get a little more information and just be able to know which ones are which and all of that. So that would be really helpful.
And I will also, because I got fascinated, I've got quite a few articles. And I'll, I'll just put links to the articles, and then you can decide if you're interested in reading them or not.
I'm so glad we hired you, Tabitha. Thank you so much for, you know, you saw that this was something that we were interested in, and you took it and ran with it and made such, like, an important and informative presentation. Thank you for all the time that you spend talking about pensions with me. But, but really, this was a really great presentation. I'm looking forward to, like, studying it again. And yeah, thank you.
So, yeah, likewise. Thank you for this informative report. And I too would love to look at the PowerPoint. I appreciate you bringing this back to us. I would very much like to have this agendized for a future business item so that the public could have an opportunity to make oral comment. And while there are some not-so-big names as the ones that you mentioned, council did receive a letter from Patrick Carr in which there were 25 community members that had signed this topic of divesting from fossil fuels. And some of those names that had come up were Julie Neander, Colin Fisk, Mark Andre, Matthew Simmons, Reese Hughes, Una Smith, and more. And I guess, you know, I'm happy that we have 261 coming because I guess if folks don't care about climate change, at least they care about how it affects their pocketbook. And it's unfortunate that they don't want to do what's right for the planet, but they'll do what's right for the pocketbook. So I'm glad that there's that stopgap measure. But, yeah, we have unprecedented fire. I mean, today, everybody could smell the smoke. And yet, we are not investing with a conscience. And I understand, you know, it, we, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the members. And, and with that, I feel like, you know, we talked about the corp, you talked about the Corporate Knights study. And I have some different information from 2009 to 2019, which is still the 10 years. And it says that if CalPERS or CalSTRS had divested from fossil fuel investments, they would have gained $11.9 and $5.5 billion respectively. And I understand, you know, the whole crystal ball and what was happening then might not be repeating itself now. But I would like to put it to the people and have an opportunity for oral comment. And I'm not quite sure how to facilitate that, but if, I'd really like to see this agendized.
Well, that's, that's my question, actually, is, because that would bring up the question too of, like, if this even could be an agenda item. I mean, can we, as a city, divest separately than what CalPERS is, is doing as their investment portfolio?
We don't, and I, and I wouldn't go so far as to say that we don't have investments in fossil fuels because most of our, all of the vehicles we are using are other pools. And so it's, it would be extraordinarily difficult for us individually to go out and take those on and, and basically not necessarily invest in, like, the state system. You know, the state system through the treasurer's office, they have very limited, but it's mostly based on limited investment opportunities, and they keep everything fairly short-term. So most of that happens to be a lot of, you know, federal government investments. But they are also allowed to invest in, like, double and triple A, you know, corporate bonds and stocks. And so there is a potential for that there. The other place is that, you know, we, we do have a, a separate investment account that is handled by Chandler, which is an investment firm that does that. And we, we can look at that. It gets really challenging when you get into that 2% or more, because you can have a mutual fund, or you can have an investment in a company that you don't even know that they have those investments. And so that piece is, is pretty challenging. I think, you know, and, and the question is, bringing this public, there isn't, there isn't a bill currently out there being proposed because it's, it's not in place, and there isn't any action that our legislatures will take now. But it certainly is something that you can consider for your platform, for your legislative platform going forward. And that might be kind of the place to put this.
So I'm thinking, too, the people that benefit from this are our employees. And so we're, we're talking about having it open to the public and telling us what they think. And I understand that totally. But also, I think it'd be really important for us to find out what our employees think, because they're the ones that are going to be retiring. They're going to be getting their funding from this. And we want to make sure that, and we have employees that have retired, and they are being funded through these. And so we have to look at it. I think we have to look at it from that point of view.
I, I do think you also have to take into account, and I don't disagree with that at all, the, the fact that the city will, will still pick up the majority of that shortfall. So if, if we divest and it costs money, then the city is the one that has to make up the difference, especially for those two large pension groups that aren't necessarily doing cost sharing with those increases. So we just need to be mindful of the impact financially on the city and, and anything we do. And I think, you know, I think as an employee, you know, I would, I would love to go this direction. I just want to make sure that it doesn't hurt future services and what we can do as a city as far as providing services and our own climate action plans and our own actions, like electric buses and stuff going forward, that do have a big impact.
And I just want to mention that the employees are the public, too. So, yeah.
No, I realize they are.
Also, shout out to the law firms that are suing Big Oil and suing the various, all the states and cities and municipalities. And that's my sister. And she was one of the lawyers at that firm and argued in federal court last week. So, woo, we love, we love to see that, sue the oil companies. All right. Any other questions for Tabitha, folks? Thank you again so much. And yeah, I would love to get my hands on that presentation. It was really interesting. And so just, thank you for bringing that. And I like to have those updates on what's going on in our state ledge, too. It's interesting to see. So, thank you. Okay. And that'll take us now to our council reports. And we'll go to my right here, and we'll start with Meredith and go down the line.
Okay. So I will not be attending the Form Based Code program on Monday because, you know, it's my third September on the council and the third time that something has been scheduled on Yom Kippur. And maybe it's me for, like, saying, oh, it's not a big deal. It's not a big deal. But it is a big deal. It's basically like scheduling something on Christmas Day. And, you know, we sit up here and we make these proclamations, like stressing inclusivity. And we are really kind of, a whole section of the population is not going to be able to come to this. And I just think it's, it's, it looks, it's a really bad look for us that we do not consider, you know, this is, you know, Jewish, it's, look at a calendar. The Jewish holidays are sundown to sundown. You know, I will be fasting until sundown. I just, so anyway, if you're celebrating Yom Kippur, I'm very sorry that you're not going to be able to attend this. Please come talk to me. You know, I can, I'm sure that David will make sure to put something together for those of us that can't go. But I mean, this is really the last time I'm going to say, it's okay, it's okay, because it's really just not okay. All right. That was my whole, you know, soapbox on that. Other things, sorry, that's really upsetting. We need to, I'd like to talk about maybe agendizing, renaming the D Street Neighborhood Center. I mean, the city couldn't even get it right on their press release where the Form Based Code was. So I think that maybe now it's time to talk about renaming it. The Coalition for Responsible Transportation is doing a week without driving on October 2nd through 8th. Maybe it was foolish that I signed up to do it because I have teenagers and I have a job that takes me, like, a million places and a lot of things that week. But I'm going to do my best. And I encourage people, like, even if you can't take the pledge, to be really mindful of, you know, when you're driving and if you can maybe figure out a way to, you know, not, or carpool, or...
Can I share a point on that?
Yes, please.
Because Colin, Colin said to me, too, because I was like, I can't actually get to work by the time I need to in Eureka if I take the bus. I've looked it up, I've tried it, I don't get there on time. And he said, well, that's great. Then share on social media. Tell people about your hardships of trying to be without a car, because that, again, opens our eyes. And I was talking to him, I was like, oh, yeah, it, it is kind of whack that I can't get to South Eureka by 8:00 AM, you know, to get to work. And so I, I, you know, at least share your effort if you try. And so I applaud that.
Yeah. Like I said, and I told Colin, I'll do my best. I don't know. Yeah. Oh, yeah. And I had a really great meeting with the fire chief, Justin McDonald. We had a really great talk. So we are talking to people. Thank you.
I also had a great meeting with the fire chief and fire board vice chair, chair, and city manager, Deemer. So, again, we are talking to our, our districts that oversee much of the space of Arcata, but also all the way, the county, up McKinleville, out where I grew up, out Fickle Hill, out everywhere. And so they're covering a lot of area and doing a lot of work. And so, again, to make sure that they have the adequate support. And Arcata usually does it pretty well. So shout out McKinleville. Vote to support their tax measures and continue to provide funding to our fire department because, again, they provide an essential service to not only Arcata, but the whole Arcata Fire District and kind of this north part of the county. So, that being said, I actually don't really have many other council updates. We're always sitting here on the, our second meeting of the month. It's right before my, my big RCEA board meeting. So nothing really else to add. Thank you. Go to Kimberly.
So I guess I want to start off in saying that I'm really sorry, Meredith, that this was scheduled during a Jewish holiday. And I realize it's late date. I suspect that there's no turning back or that we can't reschedule this. No. So moving forward, I think that we will be very cognizant to not do that and check the calendar. And I also appreciate the pledge. And likewise, I was going to do it, and then I thought, wow. So I'm going to leave my teenage daughter at her school in Eureka for an hour, and the building doesn't open, and it's in the bad part of town. And I also have a fused ankle. So it is a little bit challenging sometimes for me if the bus doesn't get me exactly where it's going. I did ride it for two semesters at Cal Poly Humboldt recently when I returned. And, yeah, it, it is a challenge. We need more bus stops, more frequent bus stops. And I'm happy to hear that it is happening. Yes. And Sundays, yes. So that. I was invited to do a PowerPoint presentation to the Sunrise Rodeo last week to discuss all the wonderful improvements in community engagement in Valley West and North Arcata. So that was a lot of fun. I attended Festehando, which had a great turnout. It was a wonderful time of sharing of diverse heritage, lots of workshops, food vendors, entertainment, dancing, lots and lots of colors with, yeah, activities for all ages. And I wanted to thank the Humboldt Transit Authority, even though I just said some things, that they did provide a free bus Saturday to CR for that event. And then a shout out to Coalition for Responsible Transportation for their bike valet service at the North Country Fair. And I very much appreciate the zero-waste efforts. And thank you, Bright and Green. And another big thank you, of course, to HTA for their free bus service on Saturday to the fair. There, I attended a homeless housing working group today. There were some updates on safe parking. We talked about ways of increasing homeless services. And then I have a meeting tomorrow with the fire chief and Eric Lowden-Slider in the morning. So that's all I have.
Okay. So I'm happy that I'm here because I started to step out onto a sidewalk, and there was a bicyclist coming down the sidewalk, and he was going so fast. And I was just sort of, you know, if I'd gone out a little bit further, I would have, I don't know what condition I would have been in, because I would have been hit by that bicycle. And he just kept on going. So anyhow, it was scary to see that. And I'm really happy, whatever, kept me from stepping out earlier. We got a message, all of us, an email from Dan Gritnis, and he was interested in looking at North Town and thinking about one lane of traffic and having parallel traffic perpendicular, whatever it is that goes this way, all the way down. And he is, he was interested in looking at that. And he was, he said when we were paving the street, there was something that actually happened. And you can remember reading his email. But I thought it might be a good idea to ask that it go back to the Transportation Committee. He was planning to go to that meeting, but then his baby came a day earlier, so he couldn't actually go. And I would like to see that as an opportunity. So I don't know how the rest of you see, feel.
G and H, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I concur.
Road diet for all of G and H.
Yeah.
Look at, let's look at it.
So another, another item is that I'm waiting to find out if S B 4 actually passed. I'm not too sure. That is the one that allows housing on religious properties to be able. And I, I do know that Jennifer Dart is keeping track of that one, because we have a lot of religious properties in our area, and they have quite a large parcels. And it might be something that we could actually do. So, so we've always had this, well, my experience anyway, that we stay on this side of Mad River and that we don't cross over the Mad River. And so, you know, I've been thinking about the fact that McKinleville wants to incorporate, and Arcata has all these issues with sea level rise, et cetera. McKinleville doesn't have that. And maybe we should really think about us actually becoming part of McKinleville and McKinleville becoming part of Arcata. That would take care of this whole discussion that we, you all are going to be in a study session on, because we wouldn't even have to think about anything there. We could have a lot of high land, farmland, et cetera. And, and then my, we have the ability to actually run a city. We've been doing it for a long time. And I'm thinking that maybe that would be an asset. But for years, we said, no way will Arcata ever go across the Mad River. And maybe that was an error on our part. Maybe we should really have been thinking about going across the Mad River, figuring out what we could do to help them provide services, et cetera, that they desperately would like. And, and then that would have given us an area of growth that we could have actually had, that would meet our needs, and we wouldn't have to be so concerned about sea level rise. And we would have a nice plant somewhere in McKinleville for sewer treatment, et cetera. So I just wanted to throw that out, that maybe we should think about that and see what they all think and what, how the county would feel about that. And we'd make it much better for us. So those, those are my thoughts. And I'm here because I didn't get run over by a bike, so I could talk about it.
Glad you're here, Alex. Okay. Well, with that, I believe our meeting is adjourned.